Yeah.
One percent.
One percent.
It would trickle down.
Yes, it was a state thing because they were talking about raising it four percent and changed it to one percent.
That is, that is.
Yeah, exactly.
County or state?
State's raising it, but sounds like maybe some trickle back. Well, I mean, the state raises it, but the state doesn't really, I don't think, collect very much of our TRT.
So.
I think, I think county.
Yeah.
The county gets there separately from us.
Right.
I have not seen anything pop up right away, but it is increasing.
So I have a question on the sales tax. So if a business does cash transactions, those are still, those cash transactions for goods or services still should be having taxed on sales tax.
They absolutely should be.
Yes. Alright, so how do we handle it when we're aware that that's not going to be?
If I can answer frankly, so that's a really good reason that we should be ensuring that everyone has a business license through the town. Because the county then goes to the business license administrator, so for us that would be Linda's clerk, and says, hey, what's your list of business licenses this year? Do you have anyone new? And so then it's reported up to them, which is then reported to the state. And so then those authorities would, would come and say, you need to pay your sales tax that you should have been collecting. And so, you know, one of the things that we can probably do as a town as we're administering these is, you know, explain that, you know, this is only one small piece in setting up a business, is, is getting your, your business license through the town. But I imagine that that is a huge deterrent as to why people don't want a business license is because then you are in the system and that, that information is reported. So.
And if people are not in the town, they're in unincorporated areas, also have to get a business license, but it's, I think, a hundred and twenty-five.
From the county?
Yeah.
I'm thinking specifically of businesses who have a license but are simply not reporting or collecting on cash transactions.
Cash is hard to track. We all know that. And that's, you know, we're not, but that's to me is, is the, the state's.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the state's responsibility. They would, they would initiate an audit, an audit, I would believe in.
I don't know. I mean, yeah, and I don't know for that.
And it does impact us, right? I mean, in the grand scheme of things, like these sales taxes absolutely add up. But yeah, so one of the reasons that it is important that we, you know, ensure that we're holding everyone to the same standard. But yeah, cash, cash is very tricky. And, you know, I know even when people are doing like the events or, you know, the special events and stuff, it really is kind of up to that event organizer to ensure that they're holding those folks accountable too. And I don't know too much about that, but.
I think they give a list to the state.
They give a list to state.
So it's, so they are tracking this. And then it's up to the state to contact that individual person about collecting their taxes.
Good questions.
So on this sales tax thing, two counties added point three percent, Ash County and Sevier. But there's nothing about ERP taxes having been raised or?
They haven't, it hasn't taken effect yet, but I thought that that was one of the things that was in the legislative session.
Well, they haven't approved it. It doesn't look like. And then these two counties that got their point, zero point three percent approved, it begins April first, twenty twenty-five. So it might take effect June or something if they pass it. But there's nothing on here that says that they passed it. I mean, it hasn't, but I would think it would be right up there.
Any other thoughts, comments, concerns about? So what this averages out to is a twenty percent reduction in taxes. And since, you know, the property tax and hopefully like the municipal highway tax wouldn't necessarily change significantly of what we're receiving. You know, I imagine across the board taxes, you know, very well could change with a changing economy. But that's how we get from, you know, these three categories of twenty-five percent dump and overall reduction of twenty percent for this particular revenue area. Moving on to licenses and permits. So we, of course, would be adding the building department fees as a ledger item. So I have an estimated fifteen thousand dollars. That is a shot in the dark. So if anyone has any additional thoughts, I mean, I know kind of what was proposed. You know, we, we certainly had modifications from the initial proposal from Kristen and Corey. I think we are all kind of guessing about how many billing permits are going to be issued. So I think this is probably one of those areas where, you know, if we have to do an amended budget, we definitely focus on this one. So that number is a shot in the dark. Everything else is just kind of in line. I do have some interesting like year-to-date stuff here. Cause I, I'm thinking that twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-five, things might have just kind of been put in, in different categories. What, what is important is like the, the total dollar amount here for short-term rentals versus business licenses is, is, you know, right on. We've, we've got an increase over twenty twenty-four. But I'll go back through with Dave and just make sure that these did hit the right categories. And I know Linda said that, you know, we've collected, collected on all of those, so we're not waiting for anything. But Linda, I don't know if you've got a gut check as to which one, I mean, higher, lower and everything. And I would imagine that the short-term rentals should be lower, a lower amount than the business licenses. But it looks like potentially Dave had some, someone got, somewhere in the budget, it got flipped. So I probably just need to flip these back around to the correct direction. So.
On the land use clearance permits, that was a, a big discussion at planning and zoning. They were surprised, and you can have me with this, if there's, you know, my interpretation, but it's, they were quite surprised that we'd have a land use clearance still go through planning and zoning with the building department. They thought that was quite redundant and didn't think that that was planning and zoning. Marcia's served on a lot of P and Z over the years and they never looked at land use clearances. They do planning and zoning and not building permits. So.
Kristen had thought that was redundant as well.
Mm-hmm. I think I argued the other way. And when we were talking about P and Z, I, I kind of see that it is redundant and it's another fee. So like, there was one solar one that had to pay the, for solar fee, but then also the land use clearance fee and stuff. So we've had one go through, but that was something that they felt quite strongly about, that that was redundant. We don't need them to do it and maybe don't need a land use clearance fee at all.
Well, at this point, what we're doing today is not adjusting the fees and that, you know, that's a whole other discussion about whether we make any adjustments.
Right. It's just in the budget for twenty-six.
And I think that right now is to just leave things as they are until we get our feet on the ground. Let's see how the next couple of months look.
I know one of the concerns, because I hear where you're coming from, look like it's showing in the budget right now. I can, I can zero it out. That's totally fine. I do think that it's important that we look at the master fee schedule kind of at the same time. I mean, we need you to get it fast. It's all good. One of my big concerns with twenty twenty-six is this balance between an administrative arm, a building department and planning and zoning. And so, you know, to have a land use clearance fee cover some of the planning and zoning stipends that we're paying out, if there is no administrative arm to approve the land use portion, because building permit is like the technical, it is the technical building permit that is being issued versus the, and you know, they're going to look and see like, okay, well, it's to plan, but do they care as much about our setbacks? Do they care as much about all the other stuff? And not, care is not the right word, but I do see a distinguishing thing between like the true building permit person and then planning and zoning, yeah, we're adhering to our stuff. So when we talk administrative, we don't have much for a budget for administrative. So if we want to be able to collect to pay back some of the planning and zoning stipends, this is definitely a way to do it. But I know it's like a bigger balloon of what is the actual chain of, you know, when someone says they want to build something, what's happening?
Right. And that's, I think, what we had that discussion before that, but then it's that last planning and zoning. So I was gonna update that. But yeah, but it does give a, a public view of everybody who is coming in to build or doing anything. They come to a public meeting to clear it. So, you know, there's that advantage to that, that we know who's got permits and, and that. Anyway, that's was.
Maybe would general consensus be to zero it out, to leave it the same? I mean, I definitely, I like running a very conservative budget and saying, we don't know how much money we're going to bring in. We want to be really stingy on our, not stingy, but like our expenses, we're going to try to minimize those.
I mean, I think this reflecting what these get currently is, and if we've changed, but since it's currently we're accepting it, let's keep it on this.
And they said they would keep doing it until told otherwise. As it, as it's, you know, morphs together or stay separate or whatever, they would keep on par on what they're doing.
Alrighty. So, and then I'm just going to move business licenses back to nine hundred, just to be in line with what we collected this year. And then the proposed budget just flips those two numbers back to kind of where they, where they should be. So. Alright, intergovernmental revenue. So this would be the grants, mashing funds. And this is our Class C road allotment for roads. So I do have a decrease. I mean, this is one that I just, you know, I haven't touched as much in terms of how much money we can expect from Class C roads funds. I don't know if that's going to remain the same. I don't know if that changes based on how the overall economy is doing. Any insight from council members who have seen this would be great.
Isn't that funded through the gasoline tax?
Don't ask me.
That's a question from Michael. I, I don't remember how they break that out.
I think that, I think that's it. It's def, it's split up around the state. You know, everybody gets their portion depending on the number of miles and stuff. And so the state allocates it out, but I don't, yeah, all these others are sales tax. We all share in everybody's taxes. But I don't know, it must be the best. I'm, I'm almost positive it's, it's tied to the gas tax. And I would say if we're going to see a downturn in tourism, we're going to see a downturn in that. You know, people are going to be traveling less. There'll be less people. But I can, I can check that.
I will, I'll keep it at fifty right now, but knowing that working with Michael on budgets in general, that whole thing will, will kind of get fleshed out. Twenty twenty-five was the last year of the loan repayment from Rhodes to General. So that's zeroed out for, for next year. Rhodes does not owe any additional money. I do have, so I just finished, or almost finished with the roads, but the San Juan County matching for this year. So this is going to be about twelve thousand dollars. And run over to my other tab here really fast. Let me just see here, because I can tighten up our number for this year. Two. So we'll say that's twelve ninety. So UDOT matching is going to be, or sorry, San Juan County is twelve thousand one hundred for this year. And then assuming that Rhodes is actually going to do quite a lot more work next year. I have twenty-five thousand, but again, this number I'll tighten up with Michael in terms of how much he thinks we can submit and get back there. I do have twenty-seven thousand in here for the electrical grant for this building. But I will get with Malia. Malia and I have a meeting on Thursday and we'll kind of talk through some additional costs that she thinks we're going to see as well as just timing for the spending of all of this. Then for next year, the, hopefully we can get that cemetery grant.
Well, that's an interesting one.
Don't tell me I have to put another zero in here again, Anne.
No, I, it looks like it might have to be a county-driven grant as opposed to a town-driven. I'm trying to sort that out. But if we can do it, that would be a few numbers.
Alright, so, and I'll just keep that assumption there. And again, this is just the first iteration of the budget. There will be many more before the end of all of this. Charges for services. I have been fairly in line with what we're seeing this year. You know, will there be fewer people who want to rent if there's a downturn in the economy? Very possible. So I can, I can cut these by a couple percentages if, if you'd like. If you keep them the same. It's twenty-four thousand dollars. It's, it's not a huge amount, but it just depends on, you know, if you feel really strongly in one direction or not, I will take that direction. So just leave it for now.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And, you know, looking at what I thought was good, like looking backwards, thinking of where we really would have seen major, major hits was during COVID.
Yeah.
And while we, we didn't see what I was expecting. So I would say even with the downturn in the economy, recreation and small parties that don't cost a lot of money are things I think people will do more of, being in the community and not traveling if we truly see the downturn. So I'd say leave it.
Okay, sounds good. And for the airport hanger, for when we get all done with the proposed amendments next year's, airport is going to move into its own special revenue fund. So this is the only, this is my only known revenue for the airport. And then we'll get to expenses in just a little bit. But that's why that note's here is that we're going to move it into its own separate account. Okay, so down to interest. So quite a lot of money in PTIF. Most of that right now earmarked for capital projects. We're probably on track to, to bring in quite, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars in interest. It's not too shabby. Thank you, PTIF. In addition to the interest rates potentially going down, if there is a very large, a couple hundred thousand dollars taken out of PTIF for any particular project or initiative, this number I think might need to come down even further than this forty-five thousand for next year. So for example, if there was, let's say we've got a half million in there. Let's say interest comes down. Just to be conservative, we might want to reduce this down somewhere to like twenty thousand. So I'm just going to put a note that as we're getting closer to finalizing budget, my recommendation would be somewhere between probably twenty to thirty-five K. That forty-five was just based off of a projected decrease in interest, interest rates. But I will highlight that. Any questions or concerns there? And then I just have a note, interest to date, so we did transfer hundred thousand from Rhodes checking to PTIF. And we just need to re, just move it back over in terms of the interest earned. So I just want to make sure that we're still keeping track of Rhodes money versus other, even when it's, you know, the physical funds are in PTIF. So Rhodes will have a little bit more interest than usual as well. And so that number reflects that, even though our year-to-date is very small, because this is just the Rhodes checking account, not Rhodes PTIF.
So the, they still don't want just a separate account for Rhodes? They don't want to deposit straight in?
Not even a little. Nope. And that's on the, on the advice of our accountant. But we can, we can definitely track the interest, especially if a nice round number like hundred thousand. But yeah, no, we will, we will always be able to track the difference. And then it's just a simple journal entry to move it back over in our accounting system.
And that, that's been, you know, goes up and down some, but it's between four and five percent. Yeah.
So I will, what I'll do is I'll work on getting a projected range in PTIF. I can probably do it month by month based off of any planned capital projects for next year. And then I will get a closer interest rate estimation, probably based on like a four percent interest rate.
So this is, is back to the funding for the roads, where it comes from. And it's, it does come from a gasoline, from gasoline sales, but they've changed it to where you pay the amount of miles. You can do a flat fee for an EV, but you pay, once you enroll your vehicle, then you pay one point one one cents per mile for twenty twenty-five. So you, yeah, you have to report.
Very interesting.
And I don't know how you report. I don't, anyway, twenty twenty-five is, there's a whole kind on it here. So because of the efficient vehicles and because all the EV vehicles and, and the efficiency going down, they, they want it on the number of miles we've driven, not on. So if you don't drive much, it'll be less, but if you drive a bunch, then it's more. So I don't know. It's kind of the same kind of gasoline tax. Except where they're also charging you taxes through electric and you pay an electric charge and even put up with your house. So. So who knows if it'll go up or down from that.
Oh, wait till next year when I have to.
And so moving down into miscellaneous revenue, I really, really don't like the term miscellaneous revenue. But it is a nice catch-all because we do sometimes get fundraising contributions and things like that. So you will see that my budgets do not include any projected miscellaneous because they should be in a category. I assume that we still are hoping to host or help with the pancake fundraiser for emergency services. I believe for this year, it would be going to the fire department. Right, so that's right. And so projecting thirty-five hundred, we usually are able to collect somewhere between there, up to four or five thousand dollars. So we'll keep there. Yeah, those are my comments on miscellaneous revenues. And then as mentioned previously, all contributions and transfers, that just gets into how money is flowing from this year into next year. Or if we have any known transfers from capital projects that we're projecting. So if we have known projects that we'll be completing in twenty twenty-six, then I plug those numbers in here to help balance out that budget. Okay. Any question? Oh, and then you'll see I've added the fund balance appropriated for airport, just knowing that we're going to keep that one separate. For anyone super detail-oriented, you'll realize that Rhodes is nested in under here, but we track it. I, we, so it's tracked under the general fund, but I keep it a completely separate fund when I do the budgeting. So it still sits under the general fund, but that kind of keeps a cleaner accounting line for us to understand where those Class C road funds go. So just a little note on that, but then you'll see that airport will be broken out there. Okay. Any questions on revenue, any concerns, anything you'd like to see added or changed? Any known grants that anyone's bringing in that I should plug in for? Yeah.
I did get good news today about the E E C V G for the CCC.
Okay, I'm gonna stop. Stayed it all out.
So the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant for Quahog Cultural Center, we were originally awarded the one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventeen cents. And we requested one hundred and sixty-six thousand and six hundred and fifty dollars. And they have actually given us the entire amount we requested. So we have actually got one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty, which is for lighting, insulation and safety.
Excellent work, Malia. Wow. So what I will do is I will jump down to our special revenue fund. And I will ask you to repeat that number in half a second. Okay. Alright, what is that number?
One hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Even?
And not seventeen cents this time.
Great. Thank you, Malia. Alright, okay.
And where, where you were talking about the airport, so is that where we would commit some, a little? So we have at least a matching to a big project or is that in?
But so if we have appropriated funds each year, those should keep adding up. And I did get a message back from Jim. Thank you, Jim. You know, it's a busy season. But I got a message back from Jim. He doesn't project any massive expenditures for the rest of this year or for next year. So we're not looking at any additional supplies, maintenance, whatever. And he's volunteering his time to do the mowing and things like that. So any money that is not spent from that hanger rent will roll into year after year after year. And I would think that yes, we would want to earmark that for matching funds for any projects as well as going back to the capital projects fund, which is money that comes out of our general funds. You all would want to identify how much of the general fund would you want to allocate or how much money per year would you want to save up to make sure that we have that pot? But yeah, any, since that's the right, I mean, I think that the state will probably do that with the airport separate funds. And we should just probably start doing it now anyway. But yeah, those will roll over. And then the, let's see here, let me try to find. Airport, okay, so hanger, we got hanger. We'll get to the expenses when we get down just a little further for the airport.
And then how far back does it roll over? Like, we've probably had that coming in for some years. Into the airport special fund?
I would have to get advice from our accountant on that. Yeah, let me leave it at that. I gotta get his advice on that one.
It seems like it would make sense.
I would say that probably any funding, like just logic-ing this out, any funding that had rolled over would probably have just gone to the ten thousand dollar, which was then eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand dollars match from the Peyton project that just took place, or the Chincinela project that just took place. Like I can definitely go back and match it up, but it's not going to be signi, I can do it. It's just probably not going to be significant enough since that project already took place last year.
Add into that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's when I was looking at the, the regulation, that's what it looked like to me. It's pretty much a wash. There's not really much in there.
I will just make a comment here though, that if I'm bored when I can't sleep, no, I'm just saying, look at hanger funding versus expenses. My inclination for us would be that if we're doing an amended budget this year, which you probably mean, then that airport fund would be broken out at the same time for fiscal twenty twenty-five and then forward. All of this with the decrease in tax revenue as well as interest earned. I, this comes out to about a thirty percent reduction versus fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And I will keep you updated as these numbers are changing. So to have a nice little balanced budget, and that means our expenditures are going to have to go down. Couple ways that we're going to probably do this. First of all, I definitely took your feedback about the legal fees. My proposal, if I am remembering correctly, there are a lot of numbers that go through my head every day. I think my estimates for legal fees for twenty twenty-six are around thirty-seven thousand dollars. The way that I got to this is I took an average of the legal fees from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three. And they all come out somewhere between thirty thousand and forty thousand dollars. Now, that's a lot of projection for, you know, I mean, as soon as July. But that's the number that I have in there. And that is the single biggest reduction that we would see outside of like grant funding changes year to year. So that's kind of where I want to skip to first, and then we can come back into some of these other admin costs. But what's the gut check on thirty-seven for legal fees?
I'd say if that's what you averaged before, before the two big lawsuits, then. Or unless, well, twenty twenty, were we still having Chris check a lot of ordinances and stuff like that in town development? We've always had him checking a lot of this.
I would hope that moving into twenty twenty six, we pull pretty much to what we told to before. I mean, the one big thing that I, that I see coming up is the need to review the general plan. But we can reduce the cost of that by using the Hanson Group of Planning and zoning.
And I've got that one as a potential capital projects plan, which would then pull out of our capital projects fund and not, straight admin. If that's allowable. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do some digging on what's allowable for capital projects and stuff, but. Um, and then this was kind of my breakdown of that thirty seven thousand, of the CCC versus legal. I'm definitely happy to put it all on admin. Um, I will continue to track our expenses based on the breakdown that I listed earlier, but, to give you all an idea for like the biz, or for the building, ordinance that was just passed, um, it looked like Chris probably spent somewhere, or we spent, excuse me, somewhere between fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred. All in with the conversations, the review, the review itself was like eleven hundred dollars. Um. So just as you're kind of adding things up from an admin side of things.
So one of the, the other things that came up in planning and zoning was, uh, discussion of the Hanson Group and their ability to help with something, and they, they really wanted their help with the airport overlay, because that's not something anybody really works with too much, and that's something they can go and kind of find you. They felt like, uh, the general plan could be done. They, they felt like that was their expertise and could really focus on that and research that and get it fine tuned.
So Planning and Zoning didn't want the Hanson Group to do a free review of the general plan and hand it off to them. Is that what I'm hearing? Because I, I was the one, I was the one communicating with the Hanson Group about the overlay and the general plan.
And they want to do, well, they want to do a free one. It's like the engineers come into town, they come in and say, oh, you've got this and this and this and this problem, and then you hire them. So that's what they're doing is trying to get, uh, a job.
But, okay, so let, so the, the airport overlay would be, we would be paying hourly to have that done, and they would give an estimate. Unless Planning and Zoning wanted to tackle it, and I'm hearing is they probably don't, which is good. And then the general plan, the Hanson Group will do a review of the general plan, tell us what needs to be changed or fixed or worked on. And we can either hire them or have Planning and Zoning do it.
Well, but I'm sure they wouldn't argue that point at all.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out what the discussion was at, at Planning and Zoning. So.
Is there anything else that can Malia answer? Um, I don't remember anything else other than that, you know, to hire them to complete and redo the general plan was sort of the discussion. It wasn't, at least I did not understand that it was a free overview.
Well, I, think, but I could be wrong. I thought I sent exactly that email that I received from Hanson Group directly to P and Z. But I may not have. I might have summarized it, but I guess what I'll do is go back to Planning, Zoning and ask, do you want the Hanson Group to do the free review? And then you do the fixing and the discussion. Because that seems to be a good use of time, but if they want to start from scratch and try to figure out where the holes are.
No, I think that's a good, if, if we can get them combined on those two projects, I think that's, that's a perfect solution. But I, I didn't see the email that went to Planning and Zoning. I wouldn't see it anyway, but I have, I've not seen that.
Yeah, if I, if no one has seen it, then that means I didn't forward it because I would not have forwarded it just to P and Z. I might have forwarded it just to Marcia because she and I were talking about it. So I'll, but that's what they, uh, and they'll give us a quote for the airport overlay because they've done set four or five of those, and we need to get it done, so.
And so, you know, it came off of this budgeted item here, so I'm not sure where that went to.
But back down to legal.
Yeah, that maybe that's somewhere that, you know, we can do it some in-house and then we can do the airport one.
I think I had it under professional services. So admin professional services for this fiscal year, that ten thousand was for road survey. Um, and I'll tighten that up. That might come down to the actual bunker, uh, thing. Looks like so far this year we've spent seven, so maybe a three thousand change there. Um, but yeah, I've got twelve thousand budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty six, and that would be for general plan review. Again, just throwing spaghetti at a wall. Um, yeah, definitely happy to reduce that number. Or change that number based on feedback from this discussion.
Yeah, the general plan review, they said they would do for free. Free's great and then, but it'll just be the review of probably like highlighting like these are the areas you don't have, or these are the areas you need to amend.
Which is a great, that, that would be, that'd be helpful. And the, and the airport, I think it'd be really helpful.
Um, I'm going to leave five thousand in the category. So this would be anything from like planning services, surveying, um, any of those other kind of things, and then thinking of, you know, if it is something that is planned for, then it could come out of the capital improvements. Category. Okay, bouncing back up to the top of admin, um, since we've kind of talked legal a little bit. Um, I have zeroed out a budget for bookkeeper for next year because realistically, we've got some other strategic priorities. Um, I'm keeping a note taker or some kind of note taker wages, um, for the interns. I glossed over them. So what I have in here, uh, knowing that, you know, probably our interns would, would transition between fiscal year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. This assumption, uh, I've got a whole thing about, um, but as I was identifying our, and this will be in our regulating too, but as I was identifying all the projects that we have on hand, looking at the three applicants who we received and kind of their skill sets and maybe how they could fall in, um, I'm actually potentially proposing that we should interview everyone, and, you know, interviews are important. Um, but I do think that we'd have enough work that we could have three interns for two to three months apiece. And so, um, lots of good math here to break out, um, May, June salary or, uh, wages versus July wages, no additional wages into, uh, August. I would say that, you know, internships are kind of ending, uh, at the end of Ja- July. Um, but that's that number there. Again, this is definitely an area, I mean, we haven't done any interviews yet. We haven't, I'll, I'll do that whole update. Um, but I think that we could have the potential to take on up to three interns. That's that, um, fourteen thousand dollars here. Definitely open to feedback. I think it's a great way to get some of the projects done, that then alleviates some of the other admin staff to work on the stuff that we need to cover, like, yeah.
So I see that it kind of takes, we're easier about the bookkeeper. You kind of get interns to do, you know, whatever is the object, but.
Addressing and mapping.
It kind of balances out the budget. It's almost the same.
So let's go back up to the bookkeeper. So you're proposing that we don't have a bookkeeper.
That is what I'm proposing for next fiscal year. I don't like that.
I don't either. No, I, I really do not like it. Um. Erin has been doing above and beyond the call of duty. And I don't know how we do this, and I guess that's something that we can sit down and have a discussion about. But I don't want Erin to get burnt out. And if we're going to make a cut, you can cut my salary. But I, and I know part of it is we don't have anybody applying. I mean, that's the other realistic piece.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we need to be, you can leave it as zero right now, but I think we need to have a really serious discussion about how we're going to fill that position. And it may be an option that we don't really like, which is to hire outkeep, um, off, outside of blood, bookkeeping service. But I really, I think we should all think about where else we could come back a little bit.
I appreciate that. And I will tell you, as I was doing the budget on Sunday, um, I definitely did.
I was doing the budget on Sunday.
Doing the budget on Sunday. Um. And what I did originally was like, okay, status quo, everything's great. And then, well, yeah, everything's, yeah, and then I had to go back through and say, okay, I'm actually, like, we're really out of money. And so, or not out of money, but if we, if we have the economic downturn that we think we're going to have, we really do need to cut the budget. So I started slash and left and right. So let's get into more of those, uh, reductions.
And your, if your interns might be helpful, but they also might be a load because training is.
Totally.
You can figure that they'll offset and free up a lot of time for you to do bookkeeping.
Yes. And the other thing too, this is only interns for like this calendar year. It wouldn't say, we don't currently have anything in the budget for someone to join us next May or next June. Um, which is probably, probably what we would want to budget for with the hopes that we would see additional revenues coming in and then could do the amended budget to bring them in. But yeah, that's, that's only for the three months that I've identified.
And, and knowing so little about how Chloris works and how working with, um, our accountant Dave Sanderson, is I would, I would adamantly protest having an intern do anything on the bookkeeping piece. I mean, I just, I just think they've got some really great big projects that they can work on that are contained. But it'll take Erin more time to teach and to fix than we're going to save. I think we just need to bring a hook kid in and have him be the accountant. The bookkeeper. Put some pressure on you.
And going back to the bookkeeper wages, I keep it at zero.
Uh, just like, don't, we can afford a bookkeeper. We all want one, but honestly, what we kind of swapped for, and I, yes, we are going to get funding from biz, um, building permits, but like, kind of admin team wise, we kind of swapped a bookkeeper for. Which is great because I don't want to be. No. We do. So. I, I can put something back in here. My issue, um, and like, unfortunately, my little, let me show you guys the top of my. Uh, my issue is we got to have a balanced budget. And so when we get back into, oh, don't do this to me again. Stella and I have not been best friends. Um, one second. Let me save this and come back to this. One second. No. No. Okay.
It's like, I, I, you know, I get that it won't be balanced, but it also won't be balanced with legality either, like what we. So like, I would rather put it in and look for, for a short, you know what I mean, than to just cut it without looking to, you know what I mean?
I do. Um, and now I can't even get it all here to that one, which stinks. Um, I don't know why Excel is doing this to me.
Could you have a lesser amount than what, because you had.
So we had twenty eight thousand budgeted for this year. Seventeen thousand was used, uh, when our bookkeeper was in-house, which would indicate to me that the twenty eight thousand was actually probably a little bit short. Um, so like realistically, now she was doing some other administrative work.
I'd say, I think that once we got things styled in, that might be a more realistic number. She's doing a lot of.
Yeah, um, yeah, no, she's.
Could you hire somebody for like a remote position that did partial and have less expense, but something that you could send off to somebody else, you know, electronically just send it to somebody and.
My issue that I was running into every time, so I, I did reach out to folks and I was noticing two issues. So the one, or the services that I was finding that could be remote, there was a lot of work that I was still couldn't be doing. Because I still have to write the checks and I still have to mail stuff and I still have to make sure, you know, all that stuff. And like, and that's not me just saying, I don't want to give it up. It's like, no, like physically here in town, I have to do all of this paperwork. And quite frankly, like, it's almost easier to know exactly what's going into the system because then writing the checks and doing the bookkeeping, like I, I know what's, what's coming. And on the flip side, like, yep, there's still plenty that, you know, we could have an email address and it's being sent to them. But most of our invoices come via paper, so that I'm going to have to scan in all the invoices. So this whole idea of like a virtual person, I was really, I was like, oh, this will be great, but then I was like, this is not going to be great. Then my other issue was the person who was like, oh, you know, we can be, you know, all, you know, not even all equipped, but you know, we'll find the cost of what they, as a bookkeeping service, were going to charge us. Um, I, I will get you, I will forward you the email. I, it was so astronomical that I didn't even forward it to you. Because I'm like, I was, I mean, I, you guys can vote to hire them, but it just, it was going to be horrible. So, um, it's really not great, but I hear where we're coming from. We'd like a bookkeeper if we can get one. Um, I wish I could figure out how to get that to my, bookkeeper's right above this. I will throw something in, but now as we're going down, we're going to have to cut some other areas.
And do you keep any track of your hours when you are working here? Do you, do you apply, like itemize or should I just?
I should. I should. Everyone else is very good about that, um, including our new building department. Malia is fantastic about it. All of our hourly folks are. I will be honest with you. I think for anyone listening, I'm sorry, I would be really sad if I tracked my hours because my salary does not, and, and I'll just be really frank with you guys, right? Like my salary does not reflect the work that I'm doing. And so I personally, I can track it if you want me to. I absolutely will. But I think you're going to be unhappy with the results and the ending wage of what I am doing versus what you all are paying me to do. And I, and I don't want to say that like in a, in a demeaning way. I'm very appreciative of my position. I am happy with my salary, but I don't want to break it down. It would make me upset.
And I think if, if we were going to require Erin to break it down, then we'd have to start looking at what does flex time look like? And how do you take that time off? And how do you not take that time off that you've been given? And I, I quite honestly, I'm with Erin.
You don't want me to do that. I would tell you from like a bookkeeper, when I was, when I was doing the estimates for the bookkeeping for last, for the twenty eight thousand dollars, um, I was looking at somewhere between twenty and twenty two an hour. Um, probably somewhere between eight and twelve hours, maybe not even that. A week, maybe like eight hours a week kind of thing. I mean, I can do that math out real fast.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Like, that was just my little category. I don't, I wouldn't want to.
No, for each of. Yeah, for each of our positions, I do, I do that, you know, kind of gut check of like, I think they're going to do this much, and this is about how you would pay them. Um, but yeah, knowing that our previous bookkeeper definitely would have exceeded that budget. Um, that just like leans into like, we were having a lot more admin versus bookkeeping. So, anyway, okay.
So when I was doing it, it was three hours a week. I mean, because it's, but in the handbook, it does say that the, um, town, that the recorder writes checks. I mean, you could have whoever the recorder is writing the checks and filing them. I mean, that's separate from the actual accounting piece.
Did you say you did three hours a week?
Thirty.
Thirty hours.
And I would say like by the time, you know, the other thing too is like essentially like working as the HR manager, who's like doing all the taxes and the payroll taxes and all of that, that like, again, I would prefer to keep with the bookkeeping because that person's doing payroll. Like, we could source it over to our accountant, but like, then you've got your monthly and your quarterly isn't all that. So like, it's not just checks and checks out. Like, there are other things that are, that are in there. Um. Unhydrous. I think the, to it, I think my biggest issue is going to be that, um, I'm sorry, I was just so excited that my Excel was working again. I lost track. We'll come back to it. Okay, so going back to this idea of the balanced budget, so, um, I kind of mentioned this to Anne, but I need, so Dave is in a conference this week, probably all week. Our accountant's in a conference, but what I'm curious about is that pri- prior year surpluses or appropriated funds have just gone into P C I F. And you, we, you have approved to put those towards specific capital projects. As opposed to putting them to capital projects, we have the ability to roll over and reallocate up to a hundred percent of each annual budget. So for us, that would look like somewhere between four and six hundred thousand dollars a year that just rolls and rolls and rolls because of the size of our town. If we get any bigger, then it's a smaller percentage. Now, you have said, nope, we want. Now, you have said, nope, we want to divert those to capital projects, which is great, you should do that. Um, but my question is, if he's, if we've already put it into capital projects, we do have this quote surplus, is there any way to reallocate it back out and use those appropriated funds for our admin expenses for this coming fiscal year? Because that is kind of that solution that gets us through a potential economic downturn. The cash is physically here, but from an accounting perspective, is it frowned upon to say, well, we, we had originally said it was here and we're gonna move it back over? Or, you know, this, and I, and I would think that maybe possibly, I mean, projects, project priorities do change and things, you know, the situation does change. But I need to get Dave's input as to if that is something that the state allows us as a municipality to do.
I mean, that thing coming in and trimming the budget as hard as we are in preparation, justification for redoing something, we're not doing it arbitrarily, we're doing it because we've cut our own budget down.
Yeah, so, um, and that, that, that definitely would be a good, a good solution to. Now, I can't even get down to my sheet.
We've been very responsible with spending, and my recollection is that, yes, we can do that, but I definitely went through that from Dave before we did anything.
Okay, so I got my thing unfrozen and now it won't let me scroll. We're having fun. Um.
Hmm, is this a good time to take like a five minute break so I can turn this recorder off? Yeah. So it is three oh seven. I am going to take a break, turn off the recorder and give us five minutes.
I'll leave this for folks on board.